You're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup with me, Roisin De Cleric.
And me, Al Brophy. Tonight, Roisin, we're joined by independent councillor for the Kilkenny electoral area Eugene McGinnis. Eugene was first elected to Kilkenny County Council in two thousand and nineteen, where he got a first preference of of over eight hundred votes. And since then, over over the five years, Eugene, as the only member of Kilkenny County Council, has been very focused on a number of different issues affecting Kilkenny City and and County. So Eugene, you're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Roisin, yeah.
Yeah, and can can I just add as well, we also asked Maureen Shortall, who's running as an independent candidate in the Castle Combe area, and Evan Barry from Shemfain, who's running in the Kilkenny City electoral area, to join us on the programme this evening, but they weren't available. So just putting that out there for for all our viewers and listeners to know. Eugene, five years ago, you were elected to Kilkenny County Council, you got over eight hundred first preference votes, which was really, really good. How have those five years been? And I suppose what have been the kind of the I suppose the highlights and the challenges that you you faced during that time?
Well, I suppose how the five years have been, if you want to look at a picture of me five years ago and one of me now, you'll probably see it. It's it's been hard work. And listen, I I knew it was going to be hard work. I mean, obviously, I come from a political family. So from that point of view, I knew what I was getting myself in for. I've enjoyed it immensely. I've enjoyed meeting so many people listening to their problems and hoping hopefully solving some of them. Challenges are always the same, Paul. It it was the same in my father's time.
Yeah.
Housing was the big issue, huge issue in Kilkenny. Now, there's a lot less on the housing list, but a lot more on it now. So there's an enormous amount of issues that you're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. But I suppose because I was born in a council housing estate, I now live in a council housing estate. And in fact, I was on the council housing list myself all of those years ago. So I can understand people's struggle. And as a consequence of that, I suppose, from that understanding, I can help an awful lot more.
And what are the you've been out canvassing for well over six weeks or more? What are the big issues that you find coming up at the doors? Is it, you know, the the things like housing, you know, footpath or local stuff? Or are, you know, are you feeling that kind of a discontent with the establishment government parties as well?
There's a huge discontent. I I suppose, you know, in all the years I canvassed, and I canvassed, as I said, for my father since I was a child. Five years ago, the issues were, there'll always be the issues of housing, there'll always be the issues of footpaths and roads and et cetera. But I think immigration and the way Ireland are handling that in general is coming up at every second door. And I think there's a huge misunderstanding about it. There's a huge a huge amount of, I think, information out there that is untrue. I think the government parties, in my opinion, are simply bluffing the Irish people, to be quite honest, which I can't put it any other way. And I think there's an enormous concern because of our services, because of teachers and because of schools and because all of this feeds into that one issue. And I think that's coming up a lot at the doors. And obviously, as a Kilkenny County councillor, it's our Dáil deputies and our, you know, our parliament, really, that deal with all of that, our Dáil, that deal with all of that. But it's coming up a lot now, Paul. Absolutely, it is, yeah.
In what way do you think are the government parties fluffing the the public?
I think that they have no joined-up thinking. They have no immigration policy, really. I think there's an open border policy, which is wrong and has been wrong from day one. I I was I was one of those people that went to America. I got a green card for the States. And I went to America. And before I got my green card, I needed to have a full medical in the Blackrock Clinic. I was interviewed, I needed a full guard of checking, I needed all of those things. I never once objected to it, because I I actually felt I felt more comfortable knowing that that was the kind of rigorous process I had to go through. The Irish government don't have such a rigorous process. They actually have no process, in my opinion. And I deal with it. I I I talk to a lot of people who are directly involved here. And anybody who tells me that there's a rigorous process is fooling themselves. And the Irish people know that the Irish government are attempting attempting to fool themselves. And I said at that council meetings, you cannot put two hundred people on a fifty-two-seater bus. We we are the most loving and giving country in the world. That has been proved year after year. If you see all of the the Geldof aid, pills, et cetera. Ireland have disproportionately paid so much money constantly into these. So that just shows you what the Irish people are like. And I'm one of those people. I've lived in quite a few different countries, and I've travelled around Europe. And I found always I was very welcome. But this is an entirely different thing altogether. There is no policy, government policy, of any description that I've come across. They're fluffing the lines all of the time. And there is no rigorous process of border control. And I think that worries people. And quite frankly, me as a county councillor, it worries me.
And Eugene, from the county council's point of view, they kind of have to pick up the slack, you know, when, say, a building is being, say, possibly being earmarked as a as a as a reception centre and stuff like that. There's very little that the county councillors can can do. You know, we had Will Patton and his independent in Carlow. And once, you know, they get a fire search, it's pretty much that's that's it then. Basically, so, you know, is the level of communication coming down from departments, is is that a problem as well?
I don't know. I don't know what 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 communication you're talking about, because I don't see it. I do see officials in Kilkenny County Council, truthfully. And I won't name any officials here. I won't name any candidates. We're having a one-to-one debate. But they are working extremely hard. They are working extremely hard. But as I said, the lack of communication is what the problem is. It seems to be an overnight we'll put people in here. Now, that's unfair to the people that are going into these places. And it's unfair to the system. From day one, I said that the way the system should have worked is that every county should have stress-tested that their own county, as in to its be it the healths, be it the hospitals, be it the schools, be it the doctors, and they should have been asked to stress-test the county and come back and say, you know, we're after stress-testing here, and we think that we can take even beyond our comfort zone, we can take one thousand, five thousand people and still have our system somewhere working. And even if they go up and then said, well, you said five thousand, but we're giving you seven, I'd still understand that. Because it's based on some kind of yardstick.
Yeah.
But that's not what they're doing. They're ringing up and they're saying, there is now another three hundred going in there, there's one hundred going in, there's two hundred and fifty going in there. And people get really worried at that lack of communication. And understand that there's an awful lot of councillors who are not racist, who desperately want to help somebody who's fleeing from a war-torn situation. And we see all the harrowing pictures on TV, as I do. And it's, we understand the problem, but the government don't deal with the problem correctly. And pretending, in my opinion, pretending to do this, pretending to have a system, it seems to be cloak-and-dagger politics constantly. And I listen to Dáil deputies in every constituency talking one in one voice in Dáilairn, and then coming down to their constituency, going on local radio and speaking to that particular local radio in a completely different way. So it's totally disjointed. It's not going to work. And people I know from knocking now at almost every door in Kilkenny, people are very, very concerned. And what's more concerning is to express a concern makes you a racist.
Yeah.
And that's very concerning, isn't it, that if ordinary citizens, ordinary citizens are expressing concerns that they are labelled?
The fact is this, I've experienced this before about a particular planning mission in a particular area, not three hundred, four, five hundred metres from me. Because I legitimately objected through our planning system against a development. Now, remember, what is extraordinary is, I objected to three other developments in the same area. Nobody mentioned those. They mentioned that dreaded word, as we all know, at that time, they said, this is a mosque objection. No, it was not. It was a planning objection, which was overruled by Borplanala. It went through the system. And Borplanala decided that it didn't meet the criteria, and they rejected it. That's our system in Ireland. The very fact that I used that system, as anybody can, made me a racist immediately. Just because I legitimately objected as somebody who lives in this area. Now, if you will express a concern about people coming into this country, I expressed a concern that we know proper border controls. That immediately, you're immediately labelled then. And I've heard this at the door also, that I am anti-this or anti-that. Now, as I've said so many times, if somebody calls me a name tomorrow morning that I haven't heard before, I'd be really impressed, because I've been called everything.
Yeah.
And I don't mind. I call it as it is. And that's what it is at the moment. You cannot say, you cannot legitimately object, you're a racist. Now, that's wrong. That's fundamentally, totally and utterly incorrect. And it denies me my right as is written in our constitution, or as is written in our planning laws, et cetera, et cetera. That's what's wrong with it. That's what's wrong, I believe now. And people who have genuine concerns, never racist, probably donated half their money to every charity that we ever named, are silent. And they will say to me at doors, Eugene, I wouldn't say it, but I I I'm happy that you are saying it.
Do you feel people, do you feel then that people feel that they are silenced?
But there is no question about that. Absolutely no question about it. When I voiced my concerns, now this was at the start of this. And because I suppose I come from a kind of a systems background, I have my own companies, and, you know, you have to have a system. And when I saw this happening, I know it it all ascended on us, descended on us. I know that the the barbaric nature of what Russia is doing, for instance, is it's just, I mean, we see it every night. It's it's horrifying to see it. And I know it happened very, very quickly. That doesn't mean to say that you could not see and say, well, there is a system that we couldn't put in here, even though it might take us a little while to deal with what's happening. And people will then say, well, we didn't realise the numbers. Whether it's ten, a hundred or ten thousand, there should be a system. Proper border control system is what we should have in place. But I said this from day one. And I can remember standing up in the council when everybody was saying, isn't Ireland wonderful that we're taking in so many, et cetera, et cetera. And I said, I don't want to be the fly in the ointment. I want us to play our part. But I want a system in place. The system I suggested, as I just, as I just outlined to you, was a stress-testing of our county to make sure that all the services would work for everyone, everyone. We know the health service we have. I meet people at the door, that a lady last night, for instance, who needs a knee operation. Now, this woman is in pain. Now, this is replicated, like, cross, I realise that. She was told that she, we were waiting about a year and a half before she would see anybody. Another lady who has problem with her hearing, et cetera. And she is, she is now waiting three years, three years. So we think that we can load more people onto a system that's not capable of of dealing with it correctly three years ago. And and it's going to be a mess. It's going to be a train crash, and we're all watching it happen.
Can I, Paul, I'll just say that one thing, then. My daughter is applying to go to Australia to work as a doctor.
Yes.
The rigmarole that she has to go through, even for the fact that she's two degrees, she's one degree from UCD and another one from Cork University Hospital. Because UCD put in only her first name, first two names, and left out her third name. But but Cork University put in her three names, that that they're questioning that and want her to go for an affidavit and get proof that this is her name. So it's all these little things that that we have to do as Irish citizens to go to apply for visas in other countries. I grew up in Africa. I grew up in South, I lived in South Africa when I was younger. I had to live by the country's rules and regulations and their culture. And an awful lot of people feel that, and rightly so, that they're not being communicated. But we have to follow all these rules and regulations in applying for a visa. But everybody else is just coming in and losing their passports. And this is very concerning. And like you, you know, Irish Political Roundup, we've been talking about immigration for a while. And people have been saying, we're far right, we're this and we're that. And I canvassed for the no-no referendum, and I was called far right. And like, as you, Paul, Paul and I both were members of the Labour Party. And how am I far right, you know? But it's this labelling and this silencing of the citizens is really causing a lot of up upset within the citizens. And it's unfair that we have to follow rules, but anybody coming into the country don't have to follow rules.
I I I went through the same system. I went through the same system going to America. And, I mean, I've lived in quite a few countries. And I contributed, I paid tax, I did all of that. And I'm just amazed. I mean, the stories about people coming in with no passports. And I've heard it, I've heard firsthand accounts of all this going on. And the government continued to say, oh, no, there's strict regulation. No, there is not. We all know that. You're not fooling Eugene McGinnis or anybody else I canvassed in Kilkenny. We're not fooling any of those. So this situation, you can take all the tents you want to want to open up. They're going to reappear. The only people that are making money are the manufacturers of the tents.
Hundred per cent.
And and this is what's happening. I mean, but the trouble is, if you get up and say what you want to say. Now, without being racist, you're just making the general contribution to the whole debate. As you saw last year, I was sitting in my front room watching my TV when my windows were smashed in. My van was smashed up. Eleven and a half thousand euros' worth of damage done to my home and my van because I stood up and spoke out. The next morning, instead of being intimidated, I got up and I did exactly the same thing. And I continue to do it and will. Rest assured, I'm not afraid, and I will continue to do that. But that is what we're dealing with here. Law and order in this country, in my opinion, is a huge issue anyway. And it's all, it's all now rolled into one here. But if we have no immigration policy, we have no strict border controls, we are going to overload a system with some people, not all. I deal, I I was just talking to a friend of mine today, who's from India. A lovely man, decent man, works hard. I have absolutely no problem. Nobody asked me to leave Italy, America, Australia, Switzerland, London. Nobody asked me to leave those places because I was Irish. If I was paying my tax, if I was working hard. But all of those places had border controls. And even as I drove around around Europe, they have reasonable controls as well, if you want to stay in that country, et cetera. We don't have them here. And I don't believe, like, I listened to Sinn Féin, for instance. Sinn Féin have have been, I suppose, campaigning for open borders since my first recollection would be probably in in nineteen ninety-eight, and I can go back that far. Gerry Adams was the one who said that he didn't see any restriction on immigration. In our, the referendum of, was it two thousand and three, two thousand and four, where there was automatic rights to children? And McDull, who was the justice minister. Yeah. But Sinn Féin said that that was racist, even to suggest that we should, we should, we should button up that loophole, as McDull suggested at the time. And it was Snoddy who said that we should introduce hate crime at that time in two thousand and four, he said that. And he said he looked forward to this going to the country, because the country would roundly reject McDull's attempts to 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 close that loophole. I think it was seventy-two or eighty-two per cent of Ireland voted to close that loophole. Mary Lou said, only in the last few years and recently, that there should be no upper limit on the amount of people that are allowed into this country. That is the most ridiculous statement I've ever heard in my life. You have to stress-test the systems first. Now, if that's where our political is going, we're all in trouble. I won't stop saying it. I'm not a racist. I'm not any of those things. I'm a proud Irishman. I work hard. And I know lots of people from different countries that work hard here as well. But listening to this is difficult, and I hear it at the doorsteps.
And Eugene, there's been a big kind of, if you look at the last couple of opinion polls, there's been a big kind of sway towards the towards independence. And you've seen this independent Ireland, which is a new party that's set up by Michael Collins and Richard Richard O'Donoghue, Michael Fitzmaurice has joined him recently. They're, this, it's set up in in a way that, to me, I don't know about other people, but it's a, it's a bit hard to understand. It's they're independents, but they're part of a party, but there's a loose whip, you know. How can you be an independent and a member of a member of a party as well? Do you think these independent groupings are a good thing, or is it just a kind of muddy waters?
Oh, well, you see, in any group in Kilkenny County Council, you have alliances and you have you have friends in in, you know, in the council on various issues or other. So you're making those, you 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 have those connections anyway. So independents, alliance, maybe alliances are, like, I certainly, when you talk about a whip, Eugene McGinnis is not interested in being told what to say or when to say it, or when not to say it. That's never going to happen to me. Not going to happen. But with with regard to working with other independents, most certainly, absolutely, it's required. Because the stranglehold that Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail, now, understand something, I don't mind what party anybody aligns to, anybody is part of, be it Fianna Fáil or Fianna Gail or Labour or whoever else or Sinn Féin, I don't mind any of that. Once you work for Kilkenny, I I don't mind what party you're involved in. But for me, I think that the stranglehold that Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail have now, because now they're embedded together, I see it in Kilkenny County Council. They control the mayoralties, they control the chairman of Kilkenny County Council, chairman of committees, and they do all of that. But what's most interesting, and I think people should look, when you see those vans passing with the candidates on them, see can you find the logos on them? Because they benefited from Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail for five years. But now they're purposely trying to hide it when they're going into a local election. Don't be fooled. Eugene McGinnis is an independent and proud to be. If you want to be an independent, leave Fianna Fáil, leave Fianna Gail. But don't attempt to fool people in Kilkenny, going around with your picture and no logo, because you've benefited from being a member of that party for the last five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. But now that the tide is turning, but people won't be fooled that easily.
Abs- absolutely. And Eugene, we mentioned housing briefly, and we've mentioned immigration. I suppose other things, I suppose, that are coming up on on the canvas, I suppose, the high street in Kilkenny, you know, there's been a lot of debate about that, you know, there was a one, a one-way system was introduced during Covid as a kind of a temporary measure, but it was retained. You're the only, you're the only member of Kilkenny County Council to to vote against that that measure. How are you, how are you seeing how that's working and how is it impacting on the rest of
The first thing, the first thing, Paul, I'd like to say, I I I voted again, I I tried to, when it was first introduced as a Covid measure. And I said I would, I would vote in favour of that Covid measure. But provided that people of Kilkenny knew what I was voting for, and I wasn't trying to sell them a dummy. In other words, a one-way system by stealth. So when, before we took that vote, I said, I want to make, I want it to be made crystal clear to me that we are voting for a temporary measure, which will go back to the two-way system. That's what I'm voting for here. And I made it absolutely clear, which is on record. And it was explained to me, Eugene, this is, the executive explained it, this is a temporary measure which will go back to the two-way. So that's what I sold to the people that trust me in Kilkenny County Council, the people who voted for me, that's who, that's what I sold to them. When we came back, it was extended, and then it was made permanent. I completely disagree with that, because it was done so under false pretenses. They should have went back to a two-way, and then by all means, have your vote and have decide whether it's a one or two-way. But now we have a one-way system. I voted against it absolutely. Now that we have it, I don't spend my time, Paul, looking back and maybe we could do this, maybe, it is what it is now. So I have to try and make the best of that. And I will say this, when you're on the outside of the county councils, and you're trying to get elected, you have a lot of different opinions about people and the decisions that the executive make or the engineers make, et cetera, et cetera. When you're part of the process, it's entirely different, because you see it in real time. And I come from a building background. I'm a carpenter and joiner by trade. I also have my own building company. So I go back, I can remember sitting in the one-bed bedsits in London, working hard on the building site the next morning. So I understand all that. But it gives me a great advantage when we talk about how how the Kilkenny develops. I have a good understanding of what engineers are talking about. So with High Street and the question you asked me, it is what it is now. And we have to make the best of what Kilkenny is. Unfortunately, Kilkenny is a medieval city, not unfortunately, it is a beautiful medieval city. But it has narrow streets, and it has restrictions, and it has all of those things. Cycling and walking is something that is going to slowly come in. And I know people are going to object to it. But if you go over to Holland and you look at schoolchildren, and it's not, it's not, it's not that much of a comparison, because they're doing it for so many years. But it's a great sight, it's a great sight to see three or four hundred children on bikes going to school in the morning, sometimes cycling a few kilometres. Now, we don't have that kind of infrastructure over here. We don't have that. But we're trying to get there. So it's a, it's a big change now. And people say, it is ridiculous to have a lane going up High Street. But I see a lot more people on on bikes now than I ever saw before. And if you can make it safer for them, well, then I'm I'm far making it safer. And I'm far encouraging more children to cycle. Get away from Facebook, get out into the, get out onto the road with your friends and feel safe about doing it. But we have a long way to go from where we are to where we should be. And the problem about it is that we don't have the bus system up and running to full capacity, because TFI, you have to bring in new routes, new buses, et cetera. And I'd like the alternative there. If you're encouraging people to get out of their car, you should have a bus available, like, say, for instance, Shandon Park, Dublin Road. You can't get a bus there, you have to cross the Ring Road or walk into town. So all of these things, Heveren, the Heveren Road, you know, all of those, they need the bus system. But there's, there's a huge leap now from where we are to where we should be. And there's going to be a lot of pain in the middle. And people I hear criticizing, you know, what does that engineer know? What is he doing? Is he an idiot? Is he just? I can tell you something, certainly our city engineer, he's not an idiot. And he certainly, we're lucky to have him. That's what I'd say. And when I see some of the decisions that are made, I know people will question. But I try to make the best decisions I can. And I'm sitting down with the engineers and with the the expertise, and I'm listening to it all. But when you hear it on Facebook, or when you hear it on social media, it's not the same, because you're not getting that expert opinion. When I started companies first, if I wanted legal opinion, I'd have to wonder, how much am I going to pay for the legal opinion? Like, I mightn't get the best, but I get enough to cover myself, you know. But now we are getting the the opinion of people who really know. Sometimes you get it wrong, Paul. You shouldn't get it wrong that much because of that information. But you know what is? All the councillors, different parties, there's no doubt that they're trying to make decisions for all of the best reasons. That's the truth of it. So I think Kilkenny is a beautiful city, and I've been to many of them. And I think the walking, cycling strategies, it looks like it's a bit disjointed, but it will come together. And I I can see it in, after my time, I can see this being of fantastic benefit to you.
I've been speaking to a lot of parents, especially, you know, when you speak to parents and they're saying, oh, they're taking their children to school between when the Castle Combe Road, children are going to Loretto, then going to Cairns. And I say, God, do they not cycle? And they say, the the one, the weather, and the two, the school books are far too heavy in the school bags. Now, that's been, that's been the same issue about the heavy, it's a heavy school bag when my children are going to school. And that is a big issue for children when they're cycling. It's even too heavy even to put on the back of the bike or anywhere else. And that's what they're saying about why they're still driving and why they won't let their children cycle to school.
That's why where we are and where we should be, there's a gap. When I was in Holland and looking at those kids, they had baskets as big as, you know, the front of the bikes with all their books on them. Now, I'm talking about two school bags. And some of them, which was really funny to watch, had electric bikes. And the guys who didn't were holding on to the shoulder of the guys who did, and they were dragging them along. But they had huge big baskets on the front. Now, people say, that's not practical. We have small lanes, and we have this and that and the other. And we can, we cannot say that. But it's, it's going to change. You know, it is going to change. And unfortunately, I walked to school from a suction place or to James Street. People say that was a different time. It was, but do you know what it is? It didn't do me any harm. I could do it more walking now, but it didn't do me any harm. And a lot of the kids walked to school with the school bags. And I, I don't know whether many of them had serious back issues as a consequence years down the road. I I I, all my friends, I don't know any of them with back issues because they carry their books. But dropping your your kid right outside that school is going to have to change. Because in my time, and as I can see it changing, there was one time, one car to every three houses. Now, there's three, there's three cars every one house. And that just cannot be sustained. And if you, if you, if you start bringing your kids and dropping them right outside the door, there has to be facility where you can drop them somewhere else and they walk a short distance, if that's what what's needed. But driving in and dropping them right outside the school door is not going to work. It's just, has to change. That has to change. The amount of cars that are on the road, that's more dangerous. The amount of cars are on the road, that's more dangerous to children than actually cycling in if there's a proper laneway. And the weather, well, they get weather over like that in Holland as well, and I walked to school in the rain. And I not, I don't want to put children through hardship, but there are ways and means of doing these things and there's always a compromise, but we need to move, we, we, we have to start moving that direction. It's healthier for children anyway.
Yeah. Do you think, uh, now I walked to school, I cycled to school. You know, go off at six o'clock in the morning and mucked out stables before I went to school, you know. And I, what you say too, about getting the children off the phones, off the, 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 the technology and actually even just walking to school, talking to one another. So really, getting children off the phones is a big issue too.
It is. I mean, as I said, when, when I saw the kids and I, I've seen them over in Switzerland, I've seen them in France, you know, and they're walking to school and they're doing what I did. They're, they're trick acting on the way to school and they're having conversations and they haven't got time to be looking at Facebooks and they haven't got time to be looking at this and that and the other. Because, you know something, for children now, they get to all their answers on social media and people say, well, that's the way it's going to be in the future. I, I, I don't know. I mean, the art of conversation might return and you know, uh, Facebook is, is, as much as you might see, are you all right? Is everything okay with you? And all these messages when somebody's not feeling well, it's a much nicer feeling when you have a friend beside you uh walking to school uh as a kid or walking home and you can have that discussion. I mean, that's what human nature is all about and that's what we're all about and spoke conversation, I think.
Should be more face-to-face and less Facebook.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just before we, we move on, we were talking about the High Street. What are the local traders and the small business owners saying about the one-way street? How, is it affecting the local economy? Is it affecting business?
Um, I meet with the traders regularly and I have good friends of mine who are traders and um they said to me that they feel that's affecting business, like, um it's, it's, it's not easy. When you ask that question, it's not easy for the traders, I suppose, it's not easy for the council insofar as if I can show uh in my turnover that since the one-way system was introduced that my business has dropped by, say, twenty percent or fifteen percent or whatever it might be. Uh, that's real tangible evidence of, you know, and of, of a business having difficulty. And there's an awful lot of, I had business in Kilkenny, I paid my rates in Kilkenny, so I, I'd understand it. But they are saying that they have been affected. What best way to, to analyze that? You know, like the council would say, we, they, they can measure footfall now, they're, they're, there's, there's, there's ways and means of doing that. Uh, their job, uh, uh, as far as a council is concerned, is to get people into the centre of Kilkenny to make it a more, uh, a, a more, an easier place to access and et cetera, et cetera. Your job is to get them into the shop. So there's a whole lot of analysis going on and I certainly listen to the traders and when I suggested a return to a two-way, it was as a con- as a consequence of listening to traders. And they're, but when you're in business, there's an awful lot of things that uh affect a business, be it up or down. And it's a, it's a, it's a deeper analysis that we need to do. Um, I think that the traders on High Street, some of them at least feel that the, the one-way system is causing them a problem. But as I said, a much deeper analysis needs to be done with that. And the fact is that that one-way system is in now and it's here to stay because it was voted in, I voted against it. So we have to work whatever way we can work to try and maximise the amount of people in Kilkenny and to help the traders do what, to do whatever trade that they need to do to survive.
Absolutely. And Eugene, you know, there's lots of different candidates out, out there, you know, they're, they're, um you know, you look at their leaflets and they, they put on it, they said, they'd like to see more affordable housing in Kilkenny. Now, when you say the word affordable housing, you know, that means different things to different people. There's a I think, was it yesterday or today was the closing date for um the, an affordable housing scheme, two affordable housing schemes in Kilkenny. Um, houses going for somewhere like in the region of two hundred and fif- fifty-five thousand, which if you did, I did a very, very basic analysis, um for a single person to get that at a four times their uh four times their salary, they'd need a start, a starting salary of about sixty-three thousand just to, just to, to, to get that, so you know, it's very, very hard to say that, that's affordable, you know. As these, there are going to be more schemes like this coming down the traps in Kilkenny. Um, how, how do you see all these um affordable housing schemes?
Um, as I've discussed recently at one of the housing meetings, I said that what really saddens me is that there's people who are just slightly over a threshold. Um, which doesn't enable them to, to avail of various benefits. But slightly above another one, so they're trapped in the middle. And they will never be able to afford a home because unfortunately their salary is slightly higher, slightly too high to avail of social housing, but not high enough to get enough money to buy a decent home. And there's so many of these schemes and so many different connotations. What happens to me now, Paul, is that when I'm approached about these schemes, affordable housing schemes, rather than get into all of the, you know, what are your, what's your salary, et cetera, et cetera, what can you afford because of the way it's calculated? The girls in the council are extremely helpful and I put them on to them, I'd say, listen, rather than discuss all your salary issues with me, please. But what I have seen so far is that there's a huge chunk of people that will never be able to buy their own homes. So if the government are going to get a handle on us, they're going to have to, they're going to have to ensure that those people who are on that lower salary will get an opportunity. And they keep on saying this, but I have seen no scheme where people can buy a decent home on low income. And that's where you need to be. That's where you need to be because the thresholds on county council uh for social housing uh has been upped and I've asked that from the very start, but that's something that Doll Eardan decided. Um, and there's a, there's people caught in the middle there, which, which I don't believe. As it stands now, I don't believe that they'll ever be able to afford a home. And that really is sad because they, they, they want the same as you want and the same as I want. They want to educate their children, they want to do and play a part in society, but because they have the jobs they have, it, it doesn't, they don't have enough of a salary to afford these homes. And the government have to do something about it. I mean, it's, it's, but I, I, I just don't see it as yet, Paul, I don't see it.
Yeah, well, like my daughter was here at the weekend and she said she's two degrees, one from U C D as a radiographer and the other from Cork as a doctor. And she was practically crying at the kitchen table. I can't even afford the rent, never mind to buy a house. I will never be able to uh buy a house, she said. Uh, on, on my salary. So middle income earners are the new homeless now as well.
Unfortunately, I hear the story all the time. I hear this all, all the time, machines. Uh, it's, it's, um it's only something that the government can deal with. And uh I think again that there's fanfare about announcing various schemes that simply don't work. And a lot of the time, I think, um, the, I think that they're aware ahead when it comes to announcing, rather than giving the detail to the council as to how to administer these schemes. But I have seen nothing yet, which is going to, which is going to allow people the possibility to dream about buying their own, a possibility to dream about buying their own home, let alone actually doing it. And that's, that, that's going to be a huge issue because unfortunately, as you know, we all know that rental property, you can't get rental property in Kilkenny, you simply can't get it. And it's way, way too expensive for most people. Uh, so buying your own home is something now that's getting further and further away. And the, the, the targets, the ambitious, ambitious targets that the government have set for building houses, they say they're meeting. Of course they're not meeting. I, I see houses being built, but they're not being built quick enough and more, more importantly, they're, they're, they're not affordable. They're not affordable. They're not affordable. Exactly right, Paul. They're not affordable.
What, what do you, what do, what, from you, from a building background and, and a businessman and a contractor, what would be your solutions in making ha- more social housing quick, building quicker, building houses quicker and making them more affordable?
You know what it is? There's so many, there's so many angles to that, it'd be difficult to cover it because uh when I was in the building trade, I could recog- I recognized all that time ago that there was no apprentices going through, no tradesmen going through. So before, you, you, before you decide to start this huge building programme, you have to have people, you have to have people to build. And if you don't increase the, the, the wages of apprentices where they can live on their wage, you will not attract people into the building industry. And not only that, but only recently I was at, um, well, last year I was at a conference where uh the Revenue were invited and quite a few others and some of the speeches were talking about uh how, how great tradespeople, how great trades are and we have to attract more people into trades and it's a great life. And I said, hold on a minute, I am one of those tradesmen. If you want to attract people into the trade, you make sure that they have another job on, uh, uh, running on the side or some other educational opportunity. Because when they get to fifty-two years of age or fifty years of age and they have arthritis in both knees and their shoulders are broke, they're not going to be running around on a roof on a building site. And most of the tradespeople that I served my time with are unemployed, are on disability. And then because they were completely immersed in their trade, they had no, they didn't do anything else. So they can't actually train for something else. And the government decide then, well, you go on a computer course and a training scheme. Absolute rubbish. Some, so, when, when you're fifty-six years of age, fifty-seven years of age, you're training for something else and you've worked on buildings all your life. So, sorry, Roshan, just that.
Yeah.
That's the basic, that's the basics of where you have to start.
Yeah.
Because before you start building programmes and before you start introducing various schemes which allow people to buy their own homes and before you start, you have to solve them to start. Again, I talk about system. We don't have a system. We don't have the tradespeople. And we're talking about inviting all those people back over here, inviting them back from Australia, when we don't have a health system. When we don't have a school system, when we don't have houses, why wouldn't God's name would they come back from Australia or America? I lived in the States. I know people are never going to come back from the States because they have jobs and they have security and they have their, be it rental, because it's a different system over there, obviously. But before you start your building and your, your ambitious targets of twenty-five, thirty thousand houses or whatever you might be, you need, you need to start off with the, with the basics first. That is to ensure that we have trained people in Ireland that will be able to move on to this ambitious building programme. Get all those building blocks in place first. And then you, at least when you have that started, the government said they have, but they haven't. Well, then you, 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 at least you have to start with that process. When it comes to actually housing and when it comes to the various schemes that you have, you have to be realistic about it. As Paul just said and you just said, you have to sit down and, and look at the people that are never going to afford their own homes and bring in a scheme. Whatever way you have to bring in, the Minister of Finance can look at that, what's affordable and what's not. But what's there at this moment in time is not working. And as I said, we don't have the tradespeople in this country and we're certainly not attracting them over here to build the ambitious programme of housing that is required in Ireland.
And they're all moving, they're all leaving the country. And, and they're not, because they cannot afford to live here and the cost, the cost of living crisis, the, the affordability of home, rent and everything else. So we're, we're educating all our children which are putting them through whether third level education, whether it's through apprenticeships or anything else, and they're leaving. So we're sending all our, our children away.
Well, we're sending all our very, very well-educated children away to take part in, in, or, or to be part of a, a different country system that works. I mean, when you meet kids, and as I did going around Europe, you meet kids that, say, eighteen, they're over on summer, summer uh work experience in Switzerland. They're, they're, they're too busy on the weekend going snowboarding, going out with their friends, enjoying all of that. They're not going to come back to this country. They can't wait to finish their education because they can see the quality of living. Listen, let me say this, I don't want to knock Ireland. I'm back here in Ireland after being all over the world. I don't want to live anywhere else. I love this country. This is where I want to be. But we need to make this country affordable. We need to make it so that our young children are, are looking forward to playing a working part in this country and building this country and enjoying the fact that they can buy their own home and bring in the systems which allow it to happen. Unfortunately now, because of now the immigration crisis that we have, and we want to be best boys in Europe and we want, and we won't confront the issue head-on. And if we don't confront these issues, politicians will have failed miserably in this country. And me as a local politician, I just, as I always say to people, I just knock down one tree at a time. I don't look at the wood. That's what I do and I work hard doing that on the ground. But I look, I look to our doll and I see decent T Ds in there. Don't get me wrong now, there's decent hard work and, and I deal with some of the senators. Excuse me, who will answer me immediately. Work, 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 work. It's not enough of them. And I believe that you, there's a disconnect then. I know we all talk in politics about a disconnect. When you're living in Bishop Burge Place and you're living in council states all your life, there is no disconnect. I know what the problems are. I've lived them. I've been on the housing list. And I can tell you, on my desk, one of the things I do have in, in a sealed, in a, in a small piece of plastic, is my doll card from the seventies. Where I had to queue up on Ballybuck Street, out along the road to collect my money because I was unemployed and I had to leave for London for work. But I can remember that and I still have that doll card from that period. And I saw pregnant women queuing in that same queue, right out in Ballybuck Street, up by Richie Karen's butcher shop, waiting for their time to go in and get their doll money because we were unemployed. That was the greatest incentive that I ever had to go out and to, to leave the country and to build up and to, to come back and start a company. And I remember that. So when you come from those beginnings, you don't forget. This is a great country, but we need to change it. We need decent politicians up in Doll Eardan who are not afraid, who are not going to be whipped in to a particular attitude, who have the courage of their convictions. And unfortunately, truthfully, I don't see it.
Paul, you're on mute.
Apologies. Um. Uh Eugene, now, time is near, is nearly, um, uh against, against us here, but um uh we, we can give you the floor here now, if we can give you, we can give you two minutes for our viewers and our listeners who are in the Kilkenny City electoral area, um I suppose, simple question, you said, Eugene McGinnis, um why should, why should they um vote for you on the seventh of June?
Well, unfortunately, Paul, for you, it's going to be a short answer. Because, um, people, I, I, I've asked about being, I, I've been invited to do a pitch for two minutes uh on, on other shows and I refuse to do them because I've said that I want people just to look at my record. And if I've worked hard enough, they'll vote for me. Because the people of Kilkenny are not stupid. So I will go on my record and what I've said is the new candidates, and without new candidates, we wouldn't have a democracy. You know, we need them. But for Eugene McGinnis, all I ask them to do is just look at my record. And if they don't think I've worked hard enough, don't vote for me. Because I've done everything I could possibly do in five years. And remember, two years of that was Covid. So my pitch is nothing else, only I stand over my record and I leave it to the people of Kilkenny to decide uh on election day.
So it's a short, short and sweet.
Short and sweet, Paul, simple as that.
Uh, as they say, well, Eugene, thanks a million for taking the time, um, for, for chatting to us here on the Irish uh political roundup. It was very interesting talking to you and you raised some, some interesting points. So from myself, I said, thank you for your time. And we wish you uh every success with the election on, on this, on the seventh of June.
I appreciate that and thank you, and thank you for taking the time to interview me, Paul. Uh, Roshan, thank you very much.